To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney.
Here. Johnson Santos. Jones. Lewis. Valalta.
Here. We do have a quorum. Item number four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda stated.
Mr. Freya.
Second.
Motion by Santos, second by Freya, to approve the agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item number five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Ryan Heller from Assemblymember Gray's office. At the request of the assembly member, we've been visiting our local city councils and reminding people that we are available to assist constituents in any matters pertaining to state agencies, motor vehicles, employment development, and the like, also to discuss legislative ideas. And most importantly, I'm here in Los Banos because I'll be here again tomorrow for mobile office hours here in the council chambers from 12:30 to 1:30 p.m. So if anybody would like to come and have a more substantive discussion at that time, I'd be happy to have that. But anyway, thanks for allowing us to be here today, and I won't take up any more of your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Rondalow, Los Banos. And just a couple of quick updates. Saturday, we had a great downtown sidewalk sale and watermelon feed, and Stacy and I survived cutting, it seemed like a million watermelons, but I know it was. And we were sticky for hours after that. But we had a lot of fun with the people that came out in spite of an incredible heat, so we wanted to thank them and publicly thank Bull's Farming for donating the watermelons to us because it was two big gigantic boxes of watermelon that have to be the best watermelon I've ever had in my whole life. So kudos to them. Wanted to update you. Tomorrow night, we're having our free social media workshop. We're going to have it at the Police Annex from 6:30 to 7:30. And this is an introduction to using Facebook for your business effectively and without losing your sanity along the way. And so we'll have handouts and worksheets. So it's going to be a really good interactive kind of workshop for people that are looking to make a difference in their business with using social media for that. There is no charge for it, but we ask if you can register, just so I know how many people to plan for. You can do it online, or you can contact me on Facebook or on my cellphone. And then I wanted to update you. We are still doing our Los Banos Business Survey through UC Merced SBDC, and we've had college students here in town going door-to-door, talking to businesses, and getting their information on issues that they're having, kind of what they see as a forecast for their business and how they feel things are going, issues with employees, if they need to hire more people, if they're looking for funding to grow or expand their business. So we've got some really good information, and I'll be presenting a report once we kind of assimilate everything when it's all done. But we've got some really good feedback from the merchants that they've talked into. There's been some that, you know, didn't choose to do that, so we thank those that were willing to give their opinions because that's really what makes SBDC provide the programs and the services that our businesses want. And that's all the surveys are for, is just to help us provide services that are needed in our community. So, thank you.
And what time in the workshop again?
6:30 to 7:30 at the Police Annex.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
I'm going to go with the short place because I'm short. Okay. My name is Jacqueline Lawrence. I'm homeless right now. I want to explain to you why. I've been, I'm a missionary. I've been a missionary over a year now for at the kitchen table. And there's a situation that's on the D Street Park. Okay, that's a park that's in the middle of town, near where I'm homeless at. And we have had the DA there, we have had the police chief there, and we have had several of the code enforcements there. The gentleman that was the biggest problem was a guy that works on bikes for everybody in this town. I have, they had expensive cars come there, getting in the car, their bikes fixed. And there was a situation that said that he had one of the bikes that was stolen out of this town, which he has told everybody he will not accept a bike to work on that is stolen, which that bike didn't even come to him in the first place. And it was put on Facebook that he was the one stole it, and they took a picture which is against the law, beyond against the law, cannot take a picture of a homeless person without their signature. Okay, the problem is, my problem is that my medicine melted. I have kidney problems, and it cost me $27 for that med, and because it's in a tent, it melted. That's my problem. So on this, on D Street, there's people that play volleyball. There's children there until 10 o'clock at night with their parents playing volleyball. The homeless are there. I found about a barbecue pit, and I welded in there. The police chief told me to leave it, to leave it at the house where I'm at, on the side of the, side of the house. He said, bring in the food. I can't. I'm disabled, and the wagon that I use to bring stuff back and forth is dirty because my brother used it for recycling. That is a health issue to bring food back and forth to that park. If I bring the wagon, the, like everybody else that has parties all over town that brings their barbecue pit there, I'm asking for the same situation. I could take it back to my mom's house. So the tickets need to stop. You're ticketing people that are homeless. They don't have the money. They're waiting for the RSI, most of them. I know what that feels like. I had all my clothes stolen in front of my mother's house, so it took me a long time to get some clothes back. So my situation is that the homeless is being treated very badly everywhere they go. The gentleman, I had to put a stop to him being across from Lynn's because the owner doesn't want him there. So most of the people that I deal with are at the D Street Park, behind Food for Less, and behind Talk About. Not all of them are homeless, but I still, I still was giving them water and ice, but I'm having knee surgery soon. I'm going to be in a rehab. Lynn Corey's working on that for me. And I want to know that if you're not going to open the warming, the cooling center, which Fresno opened it, San Jose opened it, Merced County did not open it, not in Los Banos anyways, that at least the fire department would go to those three places and bring water to those three places. Because Pastor Steve Hammond's church did bring water to the D Street church one day when it was really hot. But I feel the city should do that. So the tickets need to stop, and the DA being, bringing their, putting pressure on the homeless, which some of them have anxiety problems. They don't need that, saying that they're going to put us all in jail for being homeless. I don't drink, I don't do drugs, and the person that's helping me, Marilyn, who used to work for your dog catching people, she helps me because I'm dizzy. I've been dizzy for 36 days, and they did an MRI on me to find out why this is. I'm trying very hard to get a place in the Racket Club. That is where I take a shower. I found a house there. The turning point, I fell and hit my head in front of mental health, and they won't see me anymore where turning point is. So turning point comes to that park.
I'm, Jackie, I'm sorry, but I have to cut you off at five minutes. I'm really sorry. Okay? Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, and we'll now close the public forum, and we'll go on to the consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 216-726 through 217-076 in the amount of $3,124,050.93. Minutes for the June 5th, 2019 city council meeting. Minutes for the June 19th, 2019 city council meeting. Measure P Oversight Committee Report. City Council Resolution Number 6099, authorizing the city manager to file a regional surface transportation program, exchange program, fund claim form for fiscal year 2000, is that a typo? Is that supposed to be 1819 or 1920?
Do we have an answer?
It's supposed to be 1819. City Council Resolution Number 6100, approving the annual local fund claim to be filed with the Merced County Association of Governments for fiscal year 2019-2020 in the amount of $91,987 for street and road improvements. City Council Resolution Number 6101, authorizing entering into a license agreement between the City of Los Banos and Central California Irrigation District to construct, operate, repair, and maintain underground drainage pipeline facilities within the Canal Farm ditch. City Council Resolution Number 6102, amending Division 5 personnel benefits relating to changes to monthly health coverage allowances. City Council Resolution Number 6103, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an amended and restated ground lease between the City of Los Banos and the County of Merced for the Los Banos Fairgrounds. City Council Resolution Number 6104, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an amended and restated ground lease between the City of Los Banos and the County of Merced for the Los Banos Fairgrounds ballfields. City Council Resolution Number 6105, authorizing the city manager to execute a parking lot lease agreement with Lodge Mountain Brown Number 82 IOOF Hall Association in the amount of $10,000 for the parking lot located at 626 J Street, APN 025-023-016, and a portion of APN 025-023-015. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, let the record reflect on item E. It's 2018-2019 instead of 2019-2019. So when the motion is made, if someone could make that with that correction. Is there anyone who wishes to remove an agenda item for discussion? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to remove item K.
I, J, K.
And I will approve the rest of the agenda, if so be it, for tonight.
Okay. Items A through?
J.
J, is that correct?
That's correct.
With the correction in item E?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right. That's the motion. Do I have a second for that? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones, to approve the consent agenda, items A through J, noting the correction of item E, 2018-2019. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read over item K, which is part of our consent agenda, and making note of the request by our city manager for approval of this and putting it on the agenda. I guess for my clarification, the first question I'd like to propose to our city manager is, how long have, has the city been working on this contract?
You got it?
I don't honestly remember. It's been at least, at least a year plus. I've been in conversations with, with the Lodge and representatives of the Lodge.
Okay. All right. Today, I drove by our city parking lot, which is about 50 feet away from this particular request site. And in that parking lot, which is on the corner of 7th and J Street, there's a sign there that says, "Free parking furnished by, for your convenience by the City of Los Banos." However, the parking lot is quite large, but the parking lot needs a lot of rehab done to it. And that parking lot is available to anyone who wants to park in the downtown area to do business with the merchants. And right now, I have very strong feelings that we need to put our assets into our own property that we own to rehab our own property. Maybe at some point in the future, this might be a good idea to do a lease agreement. We also have a lot just adjacent behind City Hall here that's private property, and that owner may also come to look for city council to do some sort of agreement. But at this particular time, I think it's more appropriate for us to spend the money on our own property to rehab our own parking lot versus entering into an agreement with a parking lot that I saw today that wasn't full. And I've passed by there on several other occasions, and I've not found that parking lot to be full. So I know as we progress and our downtown grows, we may need those services, but at this particular time, we don't. And the parking lot that we do have is twice the size of the one that the city is recommending that we pay $10,000 for a 20-year lease. Also, I noted in the body of this agreement that within 15 days, if the agreement goes through, that we're to make payment on this proposed contract, and that the IOOF has to provide a $2 million insurance policy, including the city on that as the additional insured. But there's nothing in the body or in, in the resolution that I found, and maybe I overlooked it, that they are required to have that insurance policy in place before we hand over the check. Now, I know typically, that's the practice, but having something in writing makes it concrete. So that, that's the other thing that I found that I had some concern about. So my recommendation would be that this council not approve this contract at this time, and that we look at rehabbing our own property, which is twice the amount of parking, only 50 feet plus away, not that far, just a few steps away from this parking lot. And that, again, that's my proposal, is that we not move forward with this contract, and that if we have to do any negotiation, we could take this money with any additional monies that perhaps staff can find and rehab the city parking lot.
Okay. Any other comments, Mrs. Lewis? All right. Is there a plan to resurface the other parking lot, Greg?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The public parking on 7th and J is serviceable. It could use some maintenance to improve it. I suspect we haven't made any attempt to do anything in that parking lot based on public input so far.
Okay. So maybe we can look into that, too.
It can be.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other comments from council on, on this item? Yes, Mr. Jones?
So as it is right now, we sign the lease, we pay $10,000, and up front 20 years. If the landlord defaults on their maintenance obligations, we have to take them to court, which costs us a lot more money than what that lease is worth. I'm afraid of shelling out that kind of money in advance like that. I'm good with annual payments or monthly payments. At least that way, it gives us leverage. If the landlord defaults, our only option is to terminate the lease. But we have no recourse at that point. It'd be too expensive.
Alex, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, at the pleasure of the council, I'm guessing we could alter those terms of the payment. Ultimately, the Lodge would need to approve of that also, but if the council is more comfortable with some sort of payment plan, I think we could, we could include that in the agreement that would be approved or considered this evening.
And so what is our, oh, I'm sorry.
Look, Mrs. Lewis, do you have any more comments, or is it just Mr. Jones?
Yes, I just wanted to preface by saying, again, I drove by that, our city lot today, and I drove through the city lot. And it has significant potholes in it. It's degraded, the surface is degraded, and so there would, there would have to be some really good surfacing done there. But it is city property, and for me, it doesn't make logical sense to spend money to rent another parking lot when we already have one, within a short walking distance from the one that is being proposed tonight to do a contract with.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to go to, Mrs. Santos was next, and then if you'd punch in, then it'd be great. Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. My question is, how much, I guess, would it be to, or how much time would it take to look into our current parking lot being, I guess, redone and, and fixed up? Because I, sorry, I guess where I'm going with this is, with the parking lot that we're currently trying to lease, downtown definitely gets busy, but it gets the most busy, most busy when we have events and whatnot down there. So I can definitely see the need of needing another parking lot, because I definitely try to park downtown when events are going on. But with our, Mrs. Lewis does bring up a great point about our own parking lot being fixed. So I was just wondering kind of what we'd be looking at, I guess, in terms, or I guess we, or will we need to just look at that first, or, as you were saying, has anyone looked at it yet? The parking lot, our current parking lot?
Again, the parking lot is, has been, as far as I know, serviceable, but the potholes can be fixed relatively easy. Resurfacing and addressing the parking lot any further as a general fund item, I suspect that we would have to consider the cost of what type of maintenance, how much we wanted to invest in, in making those improvements.
So if, I mean, if I had to guess, you know, city man, I'm not, not an engineer, but city manager math, probably $60,000 to, you know, grind and resurface that parking lot, really, really a wag at this point. Really, the effort here in securing this parking is an eye towards the future, and and an eye towards a more vibrant downtown. Successful downtowns always have a parking issue, and there's always a problem with successful downtowns. So again, the effort here is an eye towards the future to begin to acquire and have sufficient downtown to accommodate more folks that want to come to a vibrant downtown where you want to come and be. So may not have a parking issue today, but we're really looking towards the future to acquire this parking. In the event and in anticipation, we, we see changes in the uses in the downtown. Say you have a restaurant that comes to town, we're going to need parking for that restaurant. Say you have uses other than an office space, or office uses coming to the downtown, we're going to need parking for those, for those uses. So, and the other issue is, we need parking for the employees as well. And we need parking that's available, that's not on Main Street, that's not on Sixth Street. There's nothing worse than employees parking in front of the storefronts, taking up valuable parking space from customers who want to come to the downtown. So really, the effort, again, is an eye on the future in anticipation of, you know, a more lively, vibrant downtown. To be honest, I'll take a parking problem, because that means we have a successful downtown. But to help this, the downtown succeed really is the, is the notion behind this item in front of you this evening.
You know, if I might interject, the, the, the other lot does need maintenance, and, and, you know, I could see us starting, if that's a council priority, we can work, we can work on that. But I'm downtown all the time. And what I'm seeing is a parking problem, because if that lot is closed off, then the owners are going to be parking in front of their stores, and there's not enough parking right now with, with individuals. I understand the council's commitment. I don't see the IOOF defaulting on anything. That's, that, it's not their way. And, and that parking lot is needed, because there are a lot of people that, a little bit older, that park there with the drugstore, and there's not enough parking, and, and it's basically a convenience for the people downtown. And I, I'd hate to see this, this turned down for those reasons. I know we have other costs that we need to incur, too. And if, like I said, if it's a council priority, we need to fix what Mrs. Lewis was talking about. But that parking lot is a lot closer for people, and some of them just can't walk the extra fifty or seventy-five feet. And I, I know what I see downtown, and I, I think it's, it's an excellent idea to, to have this additional parking, because it's, it's going to be needed. At least, that's what I see. So those are, those are my comments. Anything else, Mrs. Santos? Okay, I'm going to, Mr. Jones?
Do we have plans on having a leasehold in any of the other parking lots? I mean, we have the parking lot behind the Miller Lux, we have Wool Growers, we have Santa Fe, and we have the one right behind us here.
At this point, we, we really don't anticipate entering into additional leases. We've had no other discussions with any other property owners. Now, could other property owners come forward? Possibly. And if it makes sense, and if the terms are favorable, you might see additional, you might see additional requests for leases like this. But we felt this was fairly favorable to the city to obtain some, some long-term parking options for, for the downtown.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, could someone tell me whether or not that parking lot has been paved recently? Does anybody know?
I think they maintained it. They, they did a seal of it.
No, I'm asking about pavement, not maintain. I want to know, has it been paved recently?
I, I don't know about paving. I could, I could probably be the best to answer that question, but I'm, I'm not sure, but if you'd like to do it.
Oh, which parking lot?
The, the one in question. The IOOF.
The IOOF, okay.
Can someone tell me whether that's been repaved recently?
Yes, ma'am. In the last couple of years, that parking lot has not been repaved, but it has had rehabilitation work that's brought it to a satisfactory level of service. And I would also add that the way I read the agreement, that their, the IOOF is going to maintain the parking lot, this, this is a benefit for us as far as maintenance goes, probably because, and it might be the difference between what, why our parking lots are the way they are, but that parking lot was recently sealed and striped. It's in excellent serviceable shape, and it does provide parking for the folks working along Sixth Street. I, I would attest as well that with both parking lots there, for all these years, people have chosen, if they work on Sixth Street, to, to use that parking lot first before they extend out into Seventh and J.
Well, I really didn't want to have to say this, but about a year ago, I was approached by one of the IOOF members who indicated that they wanted the city to help them with the payment for the repayment of that lot. Now, I don't know why it's become crucial at this particular time, when all these years, people have been parking back there, and all of a sudden, it's become an issue for the city. Maybe there were some complaints registered before, I don't know. But now it's a priority. And the city, once again, is having to take on private industry and pay for something. Regardless of the fact that the downtown is growing and we're looking forward to it being prosperous, I still say, we have a parking lot. One that's in bad condition. But we're willing to pay for a long-term lease for someone else's private property, and then turn around at some point, when things really get congested downtown, and have to come and use taxpayer dollars to do it, maybe at a time when the cost is higher. So none of this is logic, it doesn't make any logical sense to me that we're spending money on somebody else's property. If they have an issue with parking, people parking there, whether it's from the drugstore, or from a lawyer's office, or from across the street, then they should erect signs to deal with the customers that are parking in their lot, to say who they want parking there. But for us to spend this kind of money when we have deteriorating property of a parking lot twice the size, fifty feet away, is absolutely illogical to me. And, and that's the bottom line. That's where I'm going to leave it, and I have nothing else to say on it. But I cannot support this.
Okay.
Excuse me, sir. I would like to add one more comment.
Go ahead.
In recent history, we had a, a maintenance agreement with the IOOF. I, I want to, I want to say it's, could possibly be ten years ago or more. And it, and that maintenance agreement was, is that we did the maintenance on the parking lot. So when that lease agreement, or maintenance agreement, or use agreement expired, we just sort of didn't bring it up. And, and I think that what was, what was true back then is still true today about the use of the facility. And by us not having to do the maintenance, it makes it a little bit more of a value than, than if we had to do the maintenance as well.
Do you know the cost of the maintenance that the city had to put out that ten-plus years ago?
That would have to be, we'd have to look that up. We, we did go in there. I remember during my tenure that we've gone in there and patched potholes and put a parking lot sealer on there, and filled the cracks, and then restripped it. We've had to go in there and do landscape maintenance. It's kind of dwindled down to, to not a lot of maintenance, but during that time, we were called on, on occasion to go in there and clean up the debris. And, and so our maintenance agreement, we were, held the task about doing some maintenance on that parking lot when we were responsible for the maintenance.
So when you say cleanup debris, exactly, are you talking about just picking up trash, or something larger than that?
It included trash, and papers, and leaves, and whatever else blew into the parking lot. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Well, again, for me, this is opening Pandora's box, and certainly, this city can look forward as we grow for other contracts to come forward. I'm hoping there's land that's going to be available where we can purchase and add additional city parking lots around here, and let the private parking lots be private, and city-owned parking lots be maintained by the city. That's my take on it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Freya?
I'm a little confused, Mayor. If we, the parking lot's open and is being used, if we, do we need, if we don't do this agreement, is the, are the Oddfellows planning to close the parking lot?
I don't know that they would or wouldn't.
Because my question is, how, what is this changing? It's an open parking lot.
It's private, yeah.
It's private, but it's open, and everybody uses it. And there's no limitations on it. There are a couple of people that say, "My parking place," the couple of business owners. But what's, what's, how's anything going to change with this contract? I hadn't thought much of it until right now.
I guess, you know, I, I can't give you a promise. I guess it could change. I, I guess they could say that, that people couldn't park there anymore, since it is a private parking. But, and Greg, I forgot about that, about the agreement of, of the work that we've maintained that over the years, going back fifteen, twenty years.
And I'm curious if that might have been RDA, was that RDA money that maintained it?
No.
No? Okay.
No, it was not.
But, yeah, that's my question, is how, how would things change? Because it's an open parking lot. Have the Oddfellows said they want to close it? Or if not, then that, to me, that makes it a little confusing.
Alex?
No other council members?
Yeah.
I, I will say, as part of my conversations with, with the Oddfellows representative, that, that topic did come up, that it could be, access to the lot could be limited by, by them as an organization. And they have, it being private property, that, that could be, could be a result, an end result if this agreement isn't approved. I think what that could lead to is those folks who were, were parking there, parking in other parts of town, taking up other limited parking stock. So, again, this is, this is not only an immediate issue, but an eye towards the future in acquiring parking and, and making parking more available in the downtown. Will they close it? Will they limit access? I don't know, but I certainly do know that they did, did say they could, would consider that.
Mr. Freya, anything else?
No, no, thank you, Mayor. I'm, like I said, a little, little confused. Any?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to say anything else? Okay. Mr. Jones?
You know, if we go forward with this, I would like to consider doing either yearly or monthly payments on it, just for the reason that a lot of these leases, the verbiage is very ambiguous. Maintenance, to me, and maintenance of somebody else, might mean two different things. And it could look like our public parking, where it's a little rough. And then it's, we have to take them to court to try to get them to maintain it a little bit better than what they're doing. Don't know if that's going to happen, but all we know is that if they have our full lease payment in advance, you know, they have all the leverage and we don't. So I, I do understand the need for parking in the future, especially if we start redeveloping our downtown, our sidewalks, making corners available for restaurants to come in with outdoor seating. I know we're going to probably lose quite a few parking spaces. But I'd like to see what a better plan is for maybe, not just for the IOOF parking lot, but for some of these other parking lots. If it was me, I'd like to table this one until we have a clear game plan of what we want to do. But I do think we need to secure parking. I just don't know if this is the right way to go right now.
Did you want to make a motion with the payment, the option of the monthly payments, or, or no?
We can do that. I, I will say on the, on the dollar amount, it's very minimal. What this is really covering is that insurance cost, that annual insurance cost that they're going to have. It's not going to cover any of their maintenance or anything. I mean, it's $500 a year. When you break it down, it's forty, forty-one, sixty-six a month. So it's very minimal for not having to deal with any maintenance. And I'll tell you, all it takes is just someone to move too far forward on a handicap stall and bump one of those signs and bend it over, and that's going to be four hundred bucks right there to get a contractor out there to replace that alone. So the fact that we don't have to deal with any of the maintenance, we're saving a lot of money there. That's cheaper than us maintaining our own parking lot. And that's why our parking lot looks the way it does, and these private parking lots look a little bit better. So I would just like that flexibility on making payments either annually or monthly, whatever finance won't shoot us for.
Okay.
So.
So are there any other comments? Mr. Freya?
Mr. Jones mentioned the possibility of tabling or continuing the item, and maybe that's wise. Maybe we can get a little more clarification of what we're up against, whether they really are serious about closing it if this isn't done, or, and also the long-term payment plan. And then I did see, I did see a liability that they're supposed to hold, the $2 million liability in the, in the resolution here, documents. But that would be, you know, what I'd like to do now myself. I would like to just, you know, continue the item. And continue is a better word than table, because table, generally, you don't get back to it. And see if we can get a little more clarification about what, what the plan, what the total plan is, what Oddfellows' total plan is, and what their ideas are. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, so I'll, I'll ask you the same question. So, so he was concerned about the payment plan and also the insurance?
And, and, payment plan, insurance is in the resolution here.
Oh, the insurance? Yeah, but, yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying, the payments that we're making just barely cover their insurance for that time.
Yeah.
Right. And then, I'd like some more clarification. I'm sorry.
Uh huh. It's just, I would, the way I see it is that the next parking lot owner is going to come to us and say, hey, we want $20,000 for the twenty years. And before we know it, where do we stop? So maybe we should talk to them all first and get a deal going with all of them. And that way, we at least have our leverage still, so we can negotiate one time with them all. That might be, if we're trying to acquire a leasehold in parking spaces for in the future.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'm just kind of confused. If we were to put this, hold this up, then we would be going, they would, staff would essentially be going back to the Oddfellows and making sure that they're doing maintenance, they're, I'm sorry, not that they're doing maintenance, that they're keeping up their side of the deal, and then the payments and whatnot. But it kind of seems to me like we'd be a little bit talking in circles, because if they've been working on this for about a year, it might, it seems to me like it, it might be, it wouldn't be productive for us to keep bringing, taking this back to the table. At least to me. I, I don't know if I'm just wrong about that. But, I mean, personally, for me, I thought Ms. Lewis had a very good question about our current parking lots and what we're doing with those. But I would like to see definitely that we do have more parking, if that is what we needed. So I, just for me, I could see this being, I'm in favor of this today, but I know it's at the council's discretion as to whether they, they want to approve this or not.
Mrs. Lewis?
Well, I wouldn't have an issue of bringing this back to council as Mr. Freya, Councilmember Freya, had indicated. And I'd be happy to make a motion on that and let staff, let us know what their intentions are if the council does not approve this contract. Because I, I think that's pretty draconian, to put that on the community, since they've been allowing the parking to go on all these years. That's, it just doesn't settle with me well. So if, if the contract doesn't go through, you know, are they just going to allow parking for their customers and for their employees? I don't know how they're going to monitor that, but it, this just doesn't settle right with me. I think our, does our city attorney have something you want to, no, okay.
Mr. Freya?
If that was a motion from Councilmember Lewis, I would second it.
So what is the motion? So, what is the motion?
The motion is to bring this back to council and have staff research what the intentions of the IOF are.
Going to be in regards to allowing parking in their parking lot for public if the, if the council decides not to move forward with the contract. Is, is that sufficient?
I would second that motion.
Okay.
Okay. I, I can't support that. I, just because it's under discussion, it would, I, I think Alex has, has been over this for a year with everyone. And I think dragging this out and saying now, what, if we don't approve it, we're going to challenge them, that, that, challenge them to close the parking lot? I, I, I think this is a good deal. It's, as, as Mr. Jones says, it's, it's a lot cheaper to do it this way than to maintain something else. And I think it's going to cause major headaches for us. So, I, I, I can't support that. So, we have a motion and a second, so I, I need to call for a vote, and I'd like to do that under, under roll call. Please.
Who are you?
Yes.
Johnson Santos.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Valalta.
No. Okay. The motion, or the direction is at this time for you to, to go back and talk to them. All right. Let's move on to item seven, public hearing, public hearing. If you challenge proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 7A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of amending and restating Chapter 13, Title 11 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code relating to taxi cabs. Item 7A1, ordinance number 1172, amending and restating Chapter 13, Title 11 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, and this is a second reading and adoption. And so, let's go to Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This presentation, we have a PowerPoint presentation, and this will be given by our city attorney,
Nice picture.
So, as you can see from the title page, this is all about taxi cabs. And I made this presentation to you back on June 19, 2019. I'm gonna, I'm gonna really bust through it very quickly, but just to... It's not working.
Point it towards, point it this way.
There we go. So, as you know, our current ordinance is about 50 years old or better and has only received a minor adjustment in the year 2000. And so, as the, as time goes by, the state of California has decided to, it's like my phone, I gotta like, there we go. Oh, okay. So, in 2017, the state of California decided to revamp the, the regulation of taxi cabs. It's an area of law that's pretty much driven by the state of California with some local control. And the gist of AB 1069 and AB 939 was to make it easier for taxi cab operations to exist in the local jurisdictions. And the major, the major change was that if you're permitted in one city where you're substantially doing most of your business, you're not required to be permitted in a sister city or a city next door where you happen to be picking up fares or dropping off fares. So, the words they're using are, if you're substantially located within a jurisdiction, that's where your permit is going to come from. And so, no longer would you need, for instance, a taxi cab permit in the city of Dos Palos, in the city of Los Banos, assuming you're servicing those cities within your taxi cab business. So, that was the major change that was made, but in it, hit the slide. There you go. So, this doesn't cover Lyft or Uber. They are regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. This is only dealing with taxi cabs. Next. So, what we did was, we added definitions following the state law definitions, so that we were in conformity to the state law as to what is a taxi cab, what's a taxi cab driver, and what the application process would be for taxi cab businesses. Next. So, the new ordinance is much more comprehensive than the old ordinance. And one of the good things I see in this new ordinance is we're streamlining the permit process. Currently, a taxi cab permit has to come through a public hearing after investigation by the police department and Community and Economic Development. They have to come through a public hearing process, which is timely for staff, or time-consuming for staff, and expensive for the business. So, we've, that's been changed. It will now be an over-the-counter, an over-the-counter permit dealt with both by the police department and the Community and Economic Development Department, which will be allowed to place reasonable conditions on the, both the business of owning a taxi cab business and the, and the drivers that are driving the cabs. We've also, okay, next, we've also, oop, questions. One last thing. We've also upgraded our ordinance to cover what the two assembly bills dealt with, which was mandatory drug testing, both by the taxi cab business with their drivers and reporting to the city, and mandatory drug testing when a taxi cab driver initially gets a license and when they renew their license. So, the, the ordinance is much more comprehensive in terms of keeping track of these businesses and the drivers, assuming we have some bad drivers, which I don't know that we do or we don't. But we have, this is a much better setup for dealing with taxi cabs. I think we only have three or four in town, five that are licensed in town, so it's not a big, it's not a big thing in terms of what we're doing, but it could be in the future. So, I went through this on, back in June, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. But we are recommending that you waive the second reading and move for adoption of the ordinance. That's all I have.
Did we ever find out if we can hold Uber to the same standards?
Like I, like I mentioned, they are under the auspices of the California Public Utilities Commission, and Uber and Lyft have strenuously opposed local, local control over their businesses. It's all under the California Public Utilities Commission. I think there's a big lawsuit in Los Angeles County right now dealing with that very question.
Yeah, well, I, I know in, in this case, we, we have to, you know, pass the ordinance. It just, it, and I'm not against it. It just, it just bothers me that there is a set of requirements for one that isn't required for the other.
Well, there are, there are significant requirements in the Public Utilities Commission on Lyft and Uber. We'll be monitoring any new legislation, and we'd be monitoring that, that court case so that if there's an opportunity to regulate Lyft and Uber, we'll bring that back to you.
Well, that's the best I could get, I could get right now, and I agree with that.
Okay.
All right. Not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. It just, yeah, I'd just like to see fairness. Okay. No more questions? All right, so we have a public hearing. To receive, oh, no, that's that. The public hearing, so I'd now like to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1172 as read by title, or anyone who wishes to speak. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And we have, we have two actions tonight, and one is to waive the second reading, and one is to adopt. So, who wants to do that? Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1172 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Oh, all right. Went too far here. Okay. Santos, say that again, please.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion by Lewis and second by Santos for the waiving of the second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1172 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos for the adoption of ordinance number 1172. And roll call vote? Director Maloney?
Freya?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta?
Yes. Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to item B, public hearing. To receive public comment, consideration of approval of conditional use permit and categorical exemption from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities to allow the use of a Type 40 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer in conjunction, is it just beer?
Yep.
Yeah. In conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment. La Esperanza Food Center located at 937 West Pacheco Boulevard, APN 43102002. And we're going to go to Director Elms?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
Yes, I do.
Okay. One, two, three. Okay.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll go on. So, I don't know why that one's not up, but we'll keep moving. And Kim, I guess I'm going to need your help. Maybe the batteries are dying. So, just a little, a background of a project description. This is for a Type 40 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer in conjunction with an eating place, and that is corrected, is just beer, as the mayor stated. A 41 would be beer and wine, and the applicant is only proposing to serve beer. They currently have a Type 20 ABC license, which is for the off-sale of beer and wine. They're not allowed to have onsite consumption with their current ABC license. And the restaurant within the food center closes at 6:00 PM, and onsite beer consumption will cease at 6:00 PM in accordance with their conditions of approval. The project is located at 937 West Pacheco Boulevard at La Esperanza. They have a food court within that facility, and that particular facility is located within the San Luis Plaza. So, according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301. It is an existing facility, and the project does not involve an expansion of the existing restaurant. The use permit analysis, the thorough analysis is within your staff report, as our municipal code requires general conditional use permit criteria and also onsite criteria. And ABC is the issuing authority for all alcohol licenses. So, this project is located within Census Tract 23.01. It's bound, it's essentially in the southwest quadrant of the city, but it's bound by, excuse me, the creek, Pioneer Road, the highway, and then Mercy Springs Road. This particular Census Tract does not have an over-concentration in restaurant onsite consumption. This is site photo of La Esperanza, the existing market. And next picture is the interior. This is where the food court is. This particular site has been a grocery store for as long as I can remember. So, prior to La Esperanza, it was Town and Country Market, which had a Chinese deli here, and this has been recently converted, not recently, but as La Esperanza took it over and turned into a taqueria. Next picture is another interior picture. This area is, is bordered off from the rest of the grocery store. And within the floor plan, it does show that the beer will be located behind the counter and only accessible from an employee. So, the planning commission held a public hearing on June 12, 2019, and recommended approval to Los Angeles City Council of a Type 40 alcohol license. Public comment, public hearing notices were published in the Los Angeles enterprise and mailed to a 300-foot radius on July 5, 2019. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So, with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution 6106, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, and then approve conditional use permit 2019-02 to allow the on-sale of beer in conjunction with a bona fide eating place with a Type 40 ABC license at 937 West Pacheco Boulevard. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And so, the public hearing will be conducted on City Council Resolution Number 6106, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301 and approving conditional use permit Number 2019-02 for the use of a Type 40 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer only in conjunction with an eating place for La Esperanza located at 937 West Pacheco Boulevard, more specifically identified as APN 43102002. So, I will now open the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6106. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and for action. Mr. Freya?
Thank you, Mayor. If there are no questions, I would move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6106 as read by title.
Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Freya, second by Jones to approve City Council Resolution Number 6106. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item 8, designation of voting delegate, an alternate for the 2019 League of California Cities, LCC Annual Conference, being held October 16 through 18, 2019, in Long Beach. And this is looking for a voting delegate and an alternate for that, that particular conference. And how many right now will be attending, do we know of? Okay? One?
Everybody but...
Everybody but Freya. Okay? All right. Okay. All right. So, there'll be four of us attending, and it's usually, I'm the voting delegate, and then we have an alternate. If you'd like to change that, you're not going to hurt my feelings, but I will do it gladly. Okay? So, do we have a motion? Or do we have a recommendation? Mr. Freya? Did you say something? No?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to designate Mayor Valalta and Mayor Protem Johnson Santos as the voting delegate and alternate voting delegate respectively for the California League of Cities Conference in Long Beach in October.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Freya, second by Jones to, for the nomination of the mayor and Mayor Protem to be the delegate and the alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. You're going to stay with me when you're done.
Give my regards to the Queen Mary, the ghost on board.
Number nine, consideration of approval to continue to solicit applications for the Measure V Citizens Oversight Committee and for the mayor and the mayor Protem to review, interview, and recommend appointment to the city council at the August 21, 2019 city council meeting. And this is also an action item, so it's just a simple motion. Mr. Jones?
Mine was still on.
Okay. All right. Who wants to do that? All right, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve as stated.
Okay. Ms. Freya?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Santos, second by Freya, for the approval to continue to solicit applications for the Measure V Citizens Oversight Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Advisement of public notices? No report. City managers' report? Report pursuant to Government Code Section 54953C3. Executive Compensation, Community and Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. This item and a couple others this evening, on June 19, 2019, based upon my performance review, Community Economic Development Director's salary was increased to $8,642 monthly, or $103,704 annually retroactive to February 1, 2019. A couple... Couple of announcements this evening. No pressure, chief, but mark your calendars for the Los Banos Police Department Biggest and Best National Night Out, being held on Tuesday, August 6. That'll be here downtown, Fifth Street and J Street. Again, biggest and best, I will stress again, no pressure, chief. We'll have $1 tacos, pizza, and churros. There'd be a kids' area, raffle prizes, live music with the Aaron Avila Band and the Exit Norteño Band, community groups. We will be having the Best Taco Truck Contest with celebrity judges. I don't know who those are, but you should all show up and find out who those judges will be. Secondly, we will be having a dog park community meeting on August 13 from 6 to 8:00 PM at the community center, so please join us in providing input into what that dog park will look like. Just share a, a, what I think is a pretty cool story. Council may remember, I don't know when it was, maybe a year or so plus ago, we had a Girl Scout troop show up advocating very hard to the council for a dog park. Staff reached out to that group, and they are not in college, thankfully, by the time we get to this, so they will be showing up for that community meeting and providing their collective input into the design of that dog park. So that's pretty exciting, I think. Then lastly, the High Speed Rail Authority will be holding an open house here at the community center, here in Los Banos, at the community center on August 21. The open house is from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The, the High Speed Rail Authority staff will be presenting the preferred alternative for the San Jose to Merced route. They will be doing a presentation from 6:00 to 6:45. So if you want to hear about High Speed Rail, come to that open house at the community center. Again, August 21. That's it this evening, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to item 12, report update on Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, and Measure V Committee. I don't have anything on the Measure V Committee, but the one thing we are working on, counsel, that I think is very important, they've narrowed down the choice of the land for the expansion of the landfill, which is good news for us, because we have to have a landfill that's gonna go on for, for many, many years. Or else they would be trucking our garbage and our refuse over to Highway 59, which by the time they finish would probably be another 60, 70 miles. And so that could cost us some, some real money. So, so we have to make sure, although this, this could, you know, 10, 20 years, we need to set the stage now to, to make sure that we always have a place to, to dump our trash and not be dependent upon anyone else. So, they've narrowed down the choice of the land, so now they will be getting an appraisal soon. And then when the appraisal comes in, then it'll be carried forward to MCAG, and that will be the next step to find out where MCAG is as far as where we are with the appraisal, if the, is the appraisal within reason, can they afford the land, and we go from there. So I'll be giving you more information as, as things come up, but I'm looking for your backing on this to, to make sure that we always have a viable option for the city of Los Banos. Okay? That's all I have tonight on that. City council member reports. Let's go to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So first off, or first and only, July 11, at 6, we had the, I had my first district community event. I had, I wanna go next and say thank you, thank you, thank you to all the staff that showed up. I really appreciate it. It, I said a few words, and you guys just took off with the rest, so thank you so much. And Stacy, Alex, thank you guys for getting this together and really kinda getting everything together for me, so thank you very much. We had probably about 20 residents, which I'm gonna call a success, and Rhonda Low was there as well, thank you very much. And it, I, I thought we had some very good discussion, and I would love to do it again. So, thank you once again to everyone who showed up. I really appreciate it. It was, it was a hot day, and we still had people come out, so I think, like I'm saying, it's a success. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report tonight.
Okay. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
No report.
Okay. Let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much tonight, except we had a wonderful celebration. Our Lady of Mount Carmel Catholic Church and, and at the DES Hall, had a wonderful dinner Sunday afternoon, and auction, and it was a wonderful, another one of the great activities in Los Manos for families. Thanks.
Thank you. And just to elaborate on Mr. Freya's, that is like, see, we have Portuguese celebrations, and we have the Italian celebration, and these are two, two things that, that happened at the DES Hall, and, and this happened to be the Italian celebration where we had, and, and both events, they both have free food. Is that correct?
Yes.
Both of them? Yeah, yeah. Free, free food, and, and the stew is excellent. The, the cooks in this town are phenomenal, and they learned it from their parents, and their parents learned it from their grandparents, and the tradition is, is over 100 years old in, in both nationalities of putting on these, these events. And I, I, I wish more people would come, because they, they, they just wanna give away as much food as they possibly can. Everyone is welcome. You don't, there's no donation, there's, there's nothing other than coming and enjoy good friendship and meeting new friends, and, and so I'm hoping next year that it's even bigger and better. And, and, and thank you to all the cooks and, and the, the Italian Catholic Federation who, who put that on, 'cause it was absolutely phenomenal. Thank you. Again, the free social media workshop, and that's tomorrow night? Tomorrow night from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Annex. And if you're interested, if you're in business, interested in starting a business, come and learn about social media marketing. I think it's, it's, it's a rare opportunity, because a lot of people charge for this, and, and it's free. To those people who would like to come, please contact Rhonda through...
Facebook or texting.
Okay, Facebook or, or texting you at what number?
209.
209. 704. 4384. 209-704-4384. Please give her a text, contact her, and I hope people come tomorrow night, because it's a, it's, it's a good way to, to do that. Thank you, Veronica. I had a, had a good time. Thank you to staff for the, for the great backup and, and everything they provided. Thank you for the cookies and the fruit. I like that. So, I always like cookies. So, so it was, it was a great event. And other council members, if you wanna host that, please, please make sure you contact Alex, so we can have one in your area, too, and, and let's get this done, because it's a, it's a good opportunity for, for citizens to come out and talk. And Veronica, you were the first one to do it, so thank you. Okay, so with that, we are going to go to closed session. Conference of Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, agency designated representative, City Manager Tarazas, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufa, Employee Organizations, Los Manos Public Employees Union, Public Works, and Local 1, AFSCME, Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And item B, Public Employee Annual Performance Evaluation, this is continued from the, the last meeting pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title, City Manager. If there's anything to report, we will do so when we return from closed session. Thank you, have a nice evening.